Okay, good evening. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the city, excuse me, the council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation. At the link identified in the agenda, emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Thank you for that. Right now, we're gonna have our invocation by Pastor Dan Callahan, and we will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be provided by Sierra Wakefield. So can we stand, please?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today as a community of believers gathered with thankful hearts. We give you thanks for the privilege of serving in this great city and for the opportunity to make a positive impact in the lives of those around us. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, as we all work to serve the needs of our community, for strength to carry out our duties with integrity and compassion. We pray for your blessings on all who work and serve within these walls and upon all who call this city home. We ask that this city may be a beacon of hope, justice, and progress for all who enter in through its doors. We pray for the leaders of the city and for all who are responsible for making decisions that affect the lives of its residents. We pray for our first responders, their families, and for their protection both on and off the job. We give you thanks and all praise for what you've done and continue to do in our lives
Wow, okay.
and the life of our city and in our world.
Well, that's a long time. Okay, so let's go ahead and start by welcoming Pastor from the First Baptist Church, Dan
In Christ's name, amen.
Salute, pledge.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Callahan. First Baptist Church celebrating 100 years, whereas in April 29, 1923, Dave Waddell,
which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. a carpenter, and 13 other charter members founded First Baptist Church of Yuba City, Thank you. California. And whereas that first congregation needed a place to worship and met in a Seventh Day Under Agenda for Modifications approval for Agenda, we have, Councilmember Pesquale Advantage church on the corner of Plume Street and Forbes Avenue. has requested that Item 7 on the consent calendar be pulled at, discussed separately. And whereas founding pastor Waddell left his church just a few months after the church This item will be heard as the first item of business. was chartered, he was followed by mission pastor E.L. And then we move on to ceremonial presentations. Fields, who became the first real permanent pastor. Number one, First Baptist Church, 100 Years Proclamation. Through his guidance, the church was able to get their first building. I'd like to invite Pastor Dan Callahan from the First Baptist Church of Yuba City to And whereas the first church building was a small chapel that was used in Richville, come forward, and also with the city council, join us up front, please. California, that was donated and relocated to the corner of Allman Street and Forbes Avenue, Yuba City. And whereas in 1934, a new building was built at the corner of Allman Street and Church Street to accommodate the growing congregation. And whereas in 1950, the church recognized the need to find a larger facility and started making plans for the current location at 19, excuse me, 916 Pluma Street. And whereas in 1955, there was a flood in Yuba City. I knew that, there was a flood in Yuba City. But the flood damage was minimal to the church and only enhanced the congregation, it only enhanced the attendance over the years, in which it reached a high of over 434 people in the congregation by the year 1963. And whereas many dedicated pastors led the prayer at the First Baptist Church over the years, such as Pastor Fields, Pastor Walton, Pastor Allen, Pastor Mintz, Pastor Hasselbad, Pastor Winger, Pastor Byers, Pastor Johnson, Pastor Vassal, and the current Pastor Callahan. Woo! Not only does it take the pastor, but also the love and support from the families, too. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and behalf of the entire city council, do hereby congratulate the First Baptist Church of Yuba City on their 100th anniversary, and sincerely urge all residents of the City of Yuba City to join me in recognizing this centennial event for all the contributions that they have made in our community, done the 17th day, January 2023, at the City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California. Let's give him a hand. So Pastor, would you like to say a few things?
This is dangerous, right? It'll be short. I'm very thankful for the investment, not just from our people at First Baptist Church, but also this community. The last 100 years, it's been amazing to see my wife and I in the last four years we've been here, just how you all have really just been encouragement to us or church in a revitalization project, as well as in a new endeavor, where in the next couple of weeks, we will be joining the Grace Baptist Church on Bogan Walton and becoming Legacy Baptist Church in the next couple of weeks. And so we're excited for that step of faith for our church, as well as the church family, Grace Baptist Church. But it's been a joy to be able to know, of course, many of here on the board and be able to open up in prayer, and we appreciate all the support for First Baptist Church.
Well, thank you Pastor, and this is a little token of our appreciation to your congregation. Thank you. You've got one more to go.
We can show the video first, and then you can do the proclamation if you'd like that.
Okay.
Human trafficking is the business of stealing people's freedoms for profit. Human trafficking is evil, and it's happening right here, right now, in Yuba Sutter. Traffickers prey on our most vulnerable residents. They troll our neighborhoods in search of their next victim. They have a prolific presence on public social media websites by creating fake profiles and building trust through false promises and lies. They exploit that trust to lure women and children away from home and into sexual slavery or forced labor, with no end in sight. Human trafficking is real, and traffickers are here. They're constantly paying attention and watching for an opportunity to lure and trap their next victim. Stay informed. For more information, go to humantraffickinghotline.org or call 888-373-7888.
Okay, can I have, can I please welcome Sandy Drone and the other members of the Surruppin' Us International of Yuba City Club up front? Marysville Yuba City.
Mayor.
Club. And the city council up front as well? Am I on? Wow, what a powerful, okay, what a powerful presentation for a very real and present issue, so thank you for being here today. So this is a proclamation, whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and crime that affects individuals, families, and communities across generations, exploiting the most vulnerable among us and weakening our collective well-being. And whereas human trafficking, as defined by the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, is a commercial sex act induced by force, fraud, or coercion, or when a person induced to perform such an act is not yet 18 years old. Or the recruitment, harboring, transportation provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or service through the use of, for the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of subjugation to involuntary servitude, peonage, debt bondage, or slavery. And whereas an estimated 27.6 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reporting in every state and territory across the United States. And whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, including people affected by prior abuse or sexual violence, poverty, and unstable living situations, or homelessness, as well as those systematically marginalized and underserved. And whereas people can be trafficked in person and online in industries such as restaurants, cleaning services, construction, and factories, and by other strangers or someone they know, including partners, parents, and other family members. And whereas the Yuba City Police Department, along with other regional agencies, are committed to a coordinated, community-wide response to work with diverse partnerships to comprehensively address human trafficking. And Whereas increased community education on how to identify victims, increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected will help diminish the number of future victims. And whereas Surruppin' Us International of Marysville, Yuba City is working to increase public awareness that human trafficking is in our community and assist in maximizing efforts, as well as utilizing all of our community assets to better serve victims of sexual and labor exploitation. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim January 2023 Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and it is an opportunity to raise awareness and educate everyone on how they can prevent and respond to human trafficking, done 17th day, this 17th day of January 2023, at the City of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California. So Sandy, would you like to say a few things?
So this is our, some of our members that we have with our group, so I just wanted to thank you guys for being able to be here tonight. City of Yuba City Police Department, Chief Baker, and especially Detective Scott Rounds for sharing his work in the city with human trafficking. Would not want to forget Jenna McKay, who has been a, who is a local survivor and has a nonprofit and helps other survivors with horse therapy as they try to get through, back their lives and away from those who have preyed on them. I'd like to thank the city council, Mayor Sean Harris for helping us with, and sharing in conversations and working together to bring awareness to what's going on in Yuba Sutter. I would like to thank my human trafficking committee who works so hard to carry the mission to our community. And I know we can't change what happens nationally, but I know that we can definitely influence what happens to our local community, our children, and let those who prey on our community with today's human, with human slavery, that we bring it to light, bring light to this. I also ask you on Tuesday, the 24th, to join me as we do a walk for human trafficking awareness, and we start at the Town, Hometown Lenders at noon. And we'll walk around Civic Center Boulevard, and we'll end at City Hall at the Surruppin' Us Tree. So thank you.
Through the mayor. I got this from Jenna McKay, this afternoon, it's, I think it's pertinent. They're holding a human traffic symposium on March 3rd at Yuba College. Invited all the council, anyone else that would be interested in this important topic. They plan to have UN delegate, senators, human trafficking doctor, and many more. So if this is something that, that you're interested in helping to prevent, like these citizen volunteers and the Surruppin' Us have been very, very active, March 3rd, put it on your calendar.
Thank you for that. I'd like to present this to recognize the hard work that you folks have done in this, in this area. So can we get a quick picture of this? Okay, moving along to ceremonial presentations. Number three, we have UCAN, it's a presentation by Ashley, our development liaison, our brand new development liaison, so it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As the mayor said, my name is Ashley Patocznik. You don't have to remember my last name, just remember Ashley. And I'm the development liaison with the City of Yuba City. I work out of the Development Services Department, and I'm a planner at heart. So if you need planning-related things, you can come to me. But what I'm here tonight to do is introduce a new initiative that the city has launched called UCAN with Yuba City. So I'll focus my presentation on three elements of this new initiative. So first, what is UCAN with Yuba City? Why is the city implementing it? And how will it be implemented? And how can the community get involved with this initiative? So first, UCAN with Yuba City is a strategic business support initiative. It is a resource for existing businesses, new businesses, developers, potential developers to come to, to get answers to questions that they have about processes in the city. And this initiative emphasizes connection, communication, customer service, and collaboration. UCAN with Yuba City is a support network. It is a network that these businesses and developers can tap into in order to facilitate project reviews, accelerate permitting, streamline application processes, maintain communication, navigate regulations, and clarify sometimes kind of difficult procedures to understand. And why is this important? Why is the city interested in this new initiative? As you know, members of the council, the council has developed these strategic goals for Yuba City. There are five that you are all very aware of and are on the screen, and this new initiative features three, or meets three of those key goals. The first one being quality infrastructure, which you may think is kind of a stretch, but infrastructure can be physical and social. So this social support network will help businesses and developers, and then also if we're helping developers, we're going to be developing quality physical infrastructure. It also supports being business-friendly, that one's kind of a given, and improves the quality of life for the community, because if they know that they have someone that they can come to at the city, who will get them in touch with the right department or get them in touch with the correct council member, et cetera, that can only improve the quality of life for the community. So how are we gonna do this? The first step is developing a single point of communication. That is me. The tagline is "Call Ashley for Answers." And establishing this single point of communication is important, because I would imagine many people in the audience have maybe tried to get in touch with a municipality, and sometimes it can be tricky. Yuba City really emphasizes efficient communication, but this is just an additional step, establishing that single point of contact for the community. In addition, this new initiative promotes monthly shop talks, which are free sessions in the community at local businesses. These are hosted by the city and are tailored to individual types of businesses and developers, which I'll touch on later in my presentation. Our first shop talk was held last week at Bridge Coffee Company. It was a great success, and we were happy to be featured in the Appeal Democrat. So we are, we are really excited of the success so far, and we're looking forward to continuing these sessions to get out into the community and talk shop with them about their business, their potential business, their expansion, et cetera. We have eight more shop talks scheduled throughout the year, as you can see here on the screen, and we are focusing and tailoring these sessions to retail business owners, professional services, so think insurance, finances, dental, health, as well as developers, contractors, and engineers. These individual sessions will be tailored to the specific business type. However, they're open to people to attend. If I'm a developer and I want to come to a coffee hour, because my lunches are always full, I can attend the other session. Another way that we will be implementing this new program is with a Yuba City webpage featuring the Open Counter software. Open Counter is something that the council approved last year. It will be an online software where individuals can check their zoning, go through what's called a business portal, as well as a residential portal. So what I'll show you tonight is what that zoning portal or that zoning check will look like. This, this software is still in the process, so this is not finalized, but because this piece of the puzzle, so to speak, has been developed, I can show you here. So the community will be taken to this screen. They can click that button, "Check My Zoning," and then they enter, "I want to have a pizza shop," or "I want to develop a restaurant," or apartments, et cetera, whatever they're looking at doing, and it will pop up a map like this. The map will show them in three simple colors. Green means go, yellow, maybe you need to ask for more information from the city staff, and gray, not permitted. So then the individual can select a parcel, and let's say they select a green parcel, because that means their use type is permitted, and it will take them to this screen, which outlines the location, address, APN, the zone district for that individual parcel, any overlay zones. We're looking into including information about utilities that are located adjacent to the parcel, general plan, land use, et cetera. And a portion that I really like about this is the individual can download this page on a PDF and bring it to City Hall and talk to staff and say, "This is what I want to do, this is where I want to do it," like what are the next steps? So this portion of the portal will feed into the business portal and the residential portal, that is still in the works. But the business portal will take them through a series of questions. Is it new construction? Are you renovating? How many bathrooms? What's the square footage? And then it will populate a real-time fee estimate for individuals, so they can see for this type of business or this type of development, what's my financial cost gonna be. We're really excited for this new software. We're working as fast as we can on the integration, and we're looking at a possible launch of late spring of this year. This software will be a really great resource for the community to use, so that they can access key business and zoning information even when City Hall is closed. So that is UCAN with Yuba City. So what is, what is it? It's a business and development support network. Why does it matter? Because we at Yuba City really want to see, we have made goals to implement quality infrastructure, a business-friendly attitude, and quality of life for the community. And how are we going to do this? Shop talks in the community, the new Open Counter software, and a single point of contact. UCAN with Yuba City was established to make the community aware that Yuba City has the attitude of "you can," you know, "you can build an ADU, you can divide your property, you can open a business, even if it's scary and you don't know where to start, you can, and we're here to help." So that's my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Any comments or questions from the council?
Through the mayor. Ashley, I don't know where you came from, but all I can say is wow. Thank you very much. We've talked about something, just about exactly what you just talked about and put together for a long time, and I'm really excited to see the benefit that we're gonna provide the community and the developers, even down to, I don't know if you came up with UCAN with Yuba City, or, and all that, or, and Ashley for Answers, and, you have any stock tips, too? I don't know, but however, shop talk, all those little catchy things, is not only effective, but I think it kind of lightens up the atmosphere a little bit to get people to sit down and communicate and interact with one another, which is exactly, exactly the intent. So, and I can go on, but you did, that was a great job, very well spoken. Excited to see the, see what you, what you have, and thank you very much.
Through the mayor. Echo, echo, echo. Ashley, I get nothing but positive comments from folks you're interacting with, so kudos to you. On the, on the priorities, don't sell yourself short. Fiscal responsibility and public safety are a direct benefit from having business in our community. So I think probably your program hits all five, and, so don't be afraid to bold the other two, because I think they, they, they fall in. Finally, as the vice mayor mentioned, we've always been open for business, this council and those who have joined us over my period here, and, you know, this is just another step to be open to the business, and I thank you and the rest of the planning and community development staff. I look forward to really good things. Thanks. Through the mayor. Ashley, sign up for the Major League Baseball, because you just knocked it out of the park. Ditto for everything they've said. We've, we've waited for this day for four years, and can't wait to see what comes out of this. Just kudos to you and thank you for what you're bringing forward.
Through the mayor. Ashley, I've got a question. You've got this zoning thing that you look at. Where does the use permit fall into this?
So when individuals go on the Open Counter software, if they click on a parcel that's yellow, then it will pop up on that PDF saying, "You, this requires a conditional permitting, so you need to contact city staff." The next portion of the puzzle is implementing all of the planning entitlements that are required, so the software will know for this individual parcel, a use permit is required because it's a gas station, let's say, and then it will link them directly to the planning department and the use permit application, the timeline for processing, et cetera.
Fiscal responsibility and public safety are a direct benefit from having business in our community. So I think probably your program hits all five. And so don't be afraid to bold the other two, because I think they fall in. Finally, as the vice mayor mentioned, we've always been open for business. This council and those who have joined us over my period here. And you know, this is just another step to be open to the business. And I thank you and the rest of the planning and community development staff. I look forward to really good things. Thanks.
Through the mayor. Ashley, sign up for the Major League Baseball, because you just knocked it out of the park. Ditto for everything they've said. We've waited for this day for four years and can't wait to see what comes out of this. Just kudos to you and thank you for what you're bringing forward.
Through the mayor. Ashley, I've got a question. You've got this zoning thing that you look at. Where does the use permit fall into this?
So when individuals go on the Open Counter software, if they click on a parcel that's yellow, then it will pop up on that PDF saying, this requires a conditional permitting, so you need to contact city staff. The next portion of the puzzle is implementing all of the planning entitlements that are required. So the software will know for this individual parcel, a use permit is required because it's a gas station, let's say. And then it will link them directly to the planning department and the use permit application, the timeline for processing, et cetera.
You clearly thought this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Ashley, it sounds like you've got your four out of four. So that's, and actually, your five out of five, great job. And it is nice to have somebody there. I've, in the short time I've been on council, I've gotten that phone call where someone's been at the front desk, and for whatever reason, they've just, you know, they felt like they were lost or confused or whatever. And so it's really nice to have somebody that I can point them towards. So thank you, and then welcome to the team. Was there any comments from the public on this? Okay, well, thank you once again.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move right along to number four, D.R. Espain's Park Construction Update, presented by Brad McIntyre, Community Service Director. Over to you, Brad.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm gonna ask Ashley to come up and give the presentation. Why do I have to follow her? Great job, Ashley. So I'm here this evening, Mayor, members of the council, to give you an update on the D.R. Espain's Park and the status of it. The picture before you is a rendering that was created before construction. And so our goal is to make the park look like something like the rendering. So a little background, in August of 2019, city received a grant for $800,000. It was a matching grant. In December 21st, the council, well, prior to December 21st, council awarded a contract to Marina Landscape out of Orange, California. In 2022, we had the groundbreaking in April. The city issued a notice to proceed April 15th. The contract has experienced delays. Let me just go to my notes so I can be as good as Ashley. Has experienced delays due to supply chain, staffing, contract change orders, pretty much a lot of what our economy is facing today. We are mostly complete with all the items, but there are two large items that still need to be completed, and that is the asphalt, the concrete for the parking lot. And then we still need to hydro seed the field. You need both of those warm, you need warm weather for both of those. We have minor miscellaneous amenities that we're still taking care of. But those are the two major benchmarks that are gonna take some time to complete. You see in front of you that right now, we anticipate a park opening up after those items have been established with the amount of time that it takes to complete those around June of 2023, just come June. We have, as a staff, discussed multiple park opening options internally. We have created two options. Certainly, the biggest obstacles to opening the park are the installation of the turf and the parking lot. One option is to partially open the park where we would require the relocation of fencing, and we would have to, I'll have another map here in a second, but we would have to do fence the turfed area and then hope that nobody crosses that fence and onto the turf to damage it or actually destroy it. And this certainly option will just creates, cause warranty or damage disputes between the city. And staff does not recommend this option. Second option, which staff does recommend, is to ensure that construction has been completed. All plants have been established, no components would need to be fenced off. This also guarantees the city that there's no warranty or damage disputes between the contractor. So I show you, this picture was taken in December. And as you can see, a majority of the property is going to be turf. And that this is the parking lot that still needs to be completed. We talked about fencing. Currently, the fencing is around the perimeter of the entire park. What we would do if asked to would be to put the fence, bring the fence in, individuals be able to utilize the pathway along the perimeter, some of the amenities. But again, the fence, there is no fence that would be able to guarantee keeping individuals off the field or the turf, which again, is a majority of the property. Now I'm just gonna take you down a little tour of what's completed so far. We've talked about the bike park many times. This is the playground equipment, also where you'll see a close-up of a piece of equipment that Kwanis donated. You've got shade structures and picnic areas, and of course, right up coming off the parking lot. This over here, I'll come back to that in a sec. We've got the basketball court. We have the fitness area. This is the playground, and that I mentioned about the Kwanis. These are close-ups of the continuous walking path, shade structures, bathroom, basketball courts. These components is the fitness zone area. The water was not supposed to be there, that's not part of the components. Of course, if you fall, it won't hurt as bad, and you've got a little water. This is the exercise area as well. This is an actual picture, it looks like a rendering, but it's an actual picture of our bike park. You've got the pump track in the middle. Nope, sorry. You've got the pump track in the middle. And then you've got the different stages of ability for children to ride their bikes around and through the loop. This is a station that allows individuals to work on their bikes. The long-term plan that we've talked about is giving the ability for people to park at this park and then head to the west to along the bike path, which Public Works anticipates connecting this park and the bike path within the next year and a half. I'm sure the question's going to be asked as far as the cornhole games and the ping pong table, how will those not walk away? Cornhole, uh, cornhole games are at about 1,800 pounds each, and the ping pong table is at about 2,800 pounds. More fitness area minus the water. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Well, it's, yeah, this is exciting, and I'll be the first one to say it absolutely adds to the quality of life, which is stated, one of stated purpose goals the council has. So thank you for that. Any questions, comments from the public on this? Okay.
I've got something really quick.
Okay. The, your two options, you probably wanted a little direction? Or are you, I would go?
Yeah, I'm looking for a little direction, but I also want council to be aware of as the, I mean, if the weather keeps going the way it's going, it's pretty self-explanatory. But if the weather changes and it starts to become very nice, I anticipate council starting to get some questions. We are going to put a large banner in the front of Harder Park going along, saying when the park is going to be open, so that public that knows. And then, of course, as you're aware, there was an article in the paper. But really, the intent of this is to kind of get a feel for council. And then the second is just to kind of help you answer questions that potentially could be coming down the road.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity for the information for this beautiful park in District 2. Sorry, had to do that. I would recommend your option, the option that has the park not open until it's completely completed.
And dry. And dry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Public communication, number five, appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitted written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited. And large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their, the opinions of the group. And we do have a written request from Heather Esman.
It wasn't a written request, it was one of the cards. But that's okay. I'll take five minutes if you want to give it to me. All right, my name's Heather Esman, resident at the corner of Lincoln and Sandborne. And I'm, first, I wanted to say thank you to Brad and to Rob. If it wasn't for them working together, we wouldn't have 110 trees that are planted at eight sites at public schools that was done right. I guess it was right after Christmas. The, it was part of the Cal Fire Grant, and we were running out of time. And so it's kind of like a, let's go fast, and they implemented that very well, even though the school district was having some communication problems with them. So thank you for getting that done. Also, the weather's been really nice for us, the people that live in District 4, because since it's been so rainy and so bad, it's kept all the muscle cars off the road on the weekends. So we've had at least some, even though it hasn't been quiet, it hasn't been dangerous. Basically, I wanted to note that I have been trying with the sheriff's office to get, I mean, they say they have this neighborhood speed watch program, but when I asked the person that's supposed to implement that, which is Andre, I don't know if you know who Andre is, he didn't know about this paper. Then he said, contact me, email me. I called him, I emailed him, didn't get any response. So basically, the reason why I'm bringing this up is that, and I'll talk more on number 16 about it. But at some point, and I understand there's an agreement, and I understand that there's certain things that are going on behind the scenes, but I don't see why residents in our area have to settle with a level of service that is less than par than the rest of the city. I'm sorry, it's just that's the way it is. We all know that the county's hurting. We all know that there's a lot of sheriffs that aren't, positions that are not being filled for whatever reason. They claim it's for money, I don't know. All I know is that I live in the city, and I would like to have the same quality of service as, except for our mayor, as the rest of you have. Last, one of the things this council member Pasquale said at a previous meeting that you were talking about homelessness. I'm on the Sutter Yuba Health, sorry, Sutter Yuba Behavior Health Advisory Board. We get a lot of stuff that we have to read. The last thing was 264 pages. But we also get data on homelessness. And based on the data that I've seen, we have 95% of the people that are being served from the homelessness are longtime residents of Yuba Sutter area. There is no tourism going on. So I encourage you to reach out to the people who have this information first before you start spreading things around without knowing the actual facts behind the scenes. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments from the public?
Well, I have to apologize, I did not put a card in. I'm Jackie Silman, I'm the chairman of the board for the Yuba Sutter Food Bank. And I'm just here to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I do know on the consent calendar that you did approve some more funding for the food bank for the senior program. I also want to give a shout out to the chief, who the food bank recently had some challenges and picked up the phone, got a call, write back, took care of it, that let you know, you know, we feel really safe. And the staff wanted me to bring that tonight, to let you know that. Again, Ben Moody, Jas Preet, Ashley, of course. Without this funding, the seniors that are homebound in Yuba City just aren't being taken care of. We were giving them groceries once a week, the best we could. Colehand Luke's stepped up, Jesse loves this program. So I wanted to share that tonight. We have 61 right off the bat, and I know we're gonna double that because the word's already spreading. This is only for Yuba City homebound senior residents. So I just, again, just thank you. It means a lot that you support the food bank in the way, in the manner that you have been doing. But this was just one more step that's made a huge difference, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Any further public comments? Seeing none, we're gonna move to consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent counter for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent counter items six and eight through 12 excluding item seven? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will bring that back to the council.
Did the mayor move to approve items number six and eight through 12?
I've got a motion from the vice mayor.
Second.
And I've got a second from Councilman Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Moving along to... Business items.
We need to discuss number seven, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
We pulled number seven.
Yes. Seven's the first business.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Number seven, Transportation Development Act, TDA, claim for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Local transportation funds presented by Spencer Morrison, Finance Director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. TDA claim starts by, it uses California sales tax, uses 1/4 cent of the California sales tax. And SECOG is designated, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments is designated to administer and distribute these Transportation Development Act funds to agencies, of which it's split into two parts. One is specifically for transit, and city gets local transportation funds. The funds may be used for roadway projects, but only after unmet transit needs are addressed. So as a matter of fact, there are 17 transit needs or 17 priorities listed in the guidelines for the TDA. And roadway projects, which is how Yuba City uses these funds, comes in at number 14 out of 17. So lots of priorities ahead. SECOG looks at unmet needs in Yuba Sutter Transit Authorities using of these, so using unmet needs of Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. And Yuba Sutter Transit Authority is using these performance indicators, operating costs, passengers, vehicle service hours and miles, employee FTEs, passenger fares, local funds, operating costs, and other statistics. As, for instance, during COVID, YSTA's ridership is down about 66% for obvious reasons, but that's one of the, that qualifies as an unmet need that needs, requires funding. So we are in a joint powers authority that, with other local agencies that, so we're a member of Yuba Sutter Transit Authority. And they claim their share based on unmet needs, like I stated. And then SECOG keeps some admin dollars, and Yuba City gets the remainder. So we have chosen to be not in the transit business. And so we joined with other government authorities or other agencies to create this authority. This year, $5.5 million was designated to Yuba City. And that is split between YSTA's. They claim their share based on unmet needs. And then SECOG, Sacramento Area Council of Governments, keeps a little bit for admin. I think they might share some of that admin money with the county, but I don't really see that part, so I'm not 100%. And then Yuba City gets the remainder. SECOG's portion, I believe, is about $200,000 this year, 166, something like that. And then YSTA submitted 2.1 million in needs to SECOG, unmet needs. And then the remainder is about 3.2 million coming to Yuba City for roadway projects. According to SECOG, this year's allocation is much, much higher, about 50%. According to SECOG, this year's allocation is much, much higher, about 50, 58% higher, due to a higher local transportation fund balance. Again, we don't see that so, so easily, but they're saying that there was a higher fund balance, our allocation was greater this year, and they're also anticipating higher state sales tax revenue projection for '22, '23, which may or may not happen. If it doesn't happen, they'll come in next year, and we'll see a lower, they'll, they'll make it right. They'll, they'll lower our allocation next year. So with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing submission of the city's fiscal year 2022, '23 TDA claim to SECOG. May I answer any questions?
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll be ready for the council for questions or action.
The mayor?
My concern is that, I've been in this area my whole life, and to see one or two people on a giant bus running around the area, time after time after time, I, I just think that the model that's being used with these large buses isn't, doesn't fit with our rural community. And a 9% increase, year after year after year after year, in the ridership, I just don't see it. And I'm just wondering if, if anybody looks at possibly a new model, other than the way it's set up now, that could possibly be looked at in the future? That was my main, main concern.
Tackle that one?
I'm a member of the Yuba Sutter Transit Authority Board, I've been on there now for four, a little over four years. The model is very conservative, based upon the needs of the community and the ridership, and when you look at what other areas have done, we do have the buses that are around town, and they're not the, quite the large, large buses, those are pretty much our commuters that go back and forth between our area and Sacramento. Ridership is drastically down, and we're actually getting ready at Transit Authority to go through a study here in the spring, that we'll be looking at if there needs to be any additional changes to those routes and such. But you also have to consider that we're kind of mandated by the state that we need to offer these services, part of the quality of life, and our Transit Authority, basically, you almost ride for free, anybody does, because the fees are some of the lowest in the entire state, and that's what these funds come over, to make it accessible and try to get people to use the, the bus schedules and such. We've used other funds that have come up to, to run trial routes, even from Sam's Club up to the Yuba College campus in the north end of town, did that for a while, COVID hit, and that kind of went by the wayside, but our students ride for free. So if you're a student of Yuba College, you basically can go from Yuba City to Yuba College out of, in Marysville, all day long, and it doesn't cost anything. So from everything that I've learned over four and a half years, it's not a perfect model, but it serves and fits that need of what the state expects us to do for our residents, and it's ran in a really efficient manner than it, that it can run in. And they get different grants from different things. Matter of fact, they just piggybacked off of the RHA grant for the housing over that's going to be built on Garden Highway, which is going to help replace some of the buses, because 2035 is, I think it's 2035, maybe 2030, they have to buy, all new buses have to be all electric, and that's where that new state-of-the-art facility comes in. So I had questions early on, but I tell you, the, the dollars flow through, and it meets the need, so hopefully that's answered a lot of your questions, and come to transit, and you can be more than happy with Mr. Martin to, to get those.
Yeah, through the mayor, thank you, Councilman Pasquale, for pulling this, because I had some questions, and several of those were addressed this morning in a meeting. But what, what concerns me, in addition to the fact that the big buses travel through town with, with not a lot of riders on them, and I, I'm not a transit person, so I don't know the answer, and I certainly respect that you're watching on our behalf, and I know you are, but that's still, you know, straight face test to me says, this, there's got to be a better way. And then, when, and the staff report includes an, an increase this year to the Transit Authority's budget from us of 26%. And so that's a, you know, a series of nine percents, but now it's 26, and my understanding is that's the way it's going to be going forward. Well, this is indirect, as it's explained to me, this is indirect. The money that we have to pay them extra reduces our ability to fund and pay for our roads. And I, I think all of us have experienced what three years of drought didn't do to our roads, and now I think we're looking at what three weeks of, of rain has done to our roads. And so for me, it's fighting for every dollar we can get on these, on this road repair. And I do know my friends in the senior commission, and I relayed this this morning as well, and I encourage you maybe to reach out to, to them in regards to the dial-a-ride. I think there's been some issues, we've heard about the, what's responsiveness of the dial-a-ride. So, you know, it's an opportunity to chat about the Transit Authority a little bit. Like I said, I have utmost confidence that you're keeping your eye on the, on the ball and the bank over there, but there, there's some questions about how the funds are being allocated, and if we're getting our true return on our investment. Thank you.
Wasn't going to, but I did happen to have a opportunity to attend a, a meeting, transit meeting recently, in fact, the last one, and one of your concerns, Councilman Pasquale, was a, a large bus, and I would tell you that the, the proposal that was set forth was a good one, in that it was going to be a combination between set routes, the commuter routes, and then the established routes, and then, of course, dial-a-ride, but also a on-demand model, similar to Uber. And so, for example, where I live, in my neighborhood, up in rural Ranchero area, not served, but that'll, that'll all change, when we have, you pick up the app, and then a smaller vehicle would come to you, and I, I, it was described to me more, be like curb-to-curb, so they would, like Uber does, you get on there, and it tells you where to meet the driver, same thing, but for a transit bus. So, changes, good changes are coming, but I, I join my colleague here to my right, in that we do need to fight for every dollar we possibly can for our roads, because we're already just keeping our nose above water, if that, and that hopefully, there's a way we can make that change, we need it bad. Thank you.
Well said, well said. Looking for action from the council on this? I got a motion from Councilman Pasquale.
Second.
And a second from Councilman Shaw. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. This is item number 13, community sponsor request, presentation by Diana, Diana Langley, city manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the item before you tonight is a sponsorship request from Film Yuba Sutter, in the amount of $6,250 to help fund this next year of operation. Marnie Sanders is here tonight to talk more about the Film Yuba Sutter Commission, and then also show you a video that's been prepared. So, Marnie?
Good evening, mayor and council, thanks for the introduction, Diana. I think I'd like to kick this off with this video. It's a great reminder of why we are, we are on this path to have a film commission here in Yuba Sutter, so.
Welcome to Film Yuba Sutter, a region filled with genuine people, incredible locations, and amazing possibilities.
I personally have worked very hard with our local jurisdictions, who I can tell you firsthand that they're, they're really excited to have the film industry here, so we will work really hard to make the film industry feel welcome and comfortable here when they come to film.
Well, we understand the value of relationships. We want to do the best we can on the front end to, first of all, attract folks from the industry here, but we want to create that relationship, build upon it, and hopefully welcome them back time and time again. The attitude and the approach is always, how do we get to yes?
It's a catchy little tune, huh? So that is the, one of the products of the, the labor of last year, and I just want to start out by saying thank you to the council for your investment in Film Yuba Sutter. And there has been some progress made, and so I'll just give you a really quick update. I would like to start off by saying Sabrina Jurisich, who is the film commissioner that we're contracting with, an upstate film commission, was supposed to be here this evening to give the presentation. She was injured when a tree fell on her mother's house, and consequently fell on her and fractured her pelvis. So she was unable to be here tonight, and, and she truly is the expert in the film world, and has worked, has been working really diligently on behalf of the Yuba Sutter area, and I'm, and I'm really excited about the progress that we've made. So last year, we raised $50,000, we received $25,000 from the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association, and then Yuba City City Council, or Yuba City, Marysville, Sutter County, and Yuba County all invested at the $6,250 level to bring us to a total of $50,000 last year. And with that money, we have been able to, we've built a website, filmubassutter.com, and we've catalogued dozens of locations in the Yuba Sutter area, and we will continue to catalog those areas. We have the, the film, or the sizzle reel, as they call it, that you just saw right there. Sabrina has worked diligently at connecting us with many associations, like Film USA, California Film Commission, the association of, got to get my glasses on, because this is getting really small print, Film Commissions International, and then we have received, received designations in both Yuba and Sutter County as being, basically having a legitimate film commission, which leverages our community to, to be promoted in the film industry and to, and attract production to our area. So all of, all of that work has been done. In addition to that, Sabrina has attended over 30 different kinds of film events, and helping to promote the Yuba Sutter area. And I just also should note that with Upstate Film Commission, it includes Yuba Sutter, Tahima, and Shasta County, so currently, she's representing all of these areas. And so what I'd really like to see for our community is that we eventually get to a place where we can have our very own film commissioner, and someone who's dedicated to focusing on the Yuba Sutter area. So, so again, with that investment, and all the time that's been put into that, we were able to make some pretty great strides in establishing Film Yuba Sutter, and it is now officially established. So moving ahead, we had originally intended on requesting more money from our investors, if you will, but we, you know, given just sort of the, you know, the economy, and where things are at, and where we're at with our process, while we've made a lot of great progress, I think really now is the time to, after the infrastructure's been put into place, to, to start really working diligently at promoting, a lot more promotion. As I had said, last year, it's going to take several years to really begin to see that return on investment. Shasta County is a great example. It was probably, you know, three or four years before they really started to see the, you know, the tax revenue associated with production coming to town. So, and I, I suspect it'll be similar for, for us as well. But we have a lot going for us, we're a small community, it's a lot less expensive for production to come into small communities to film, it's cheaper to stay in hotels and eat and services, et cetera, et cetera. So into the next year, we're going to be working really hard to, to do a lot more promotion. So there is an annual report, and there is another quarterly report, and we will get that shared out. Unfortunately, with the injury and, and everything that just sort of happened in the last several days, it's kept us from getting that to you, but we will certainly get that to you. Councilmember Harris is on the Film Yuba Sutter Commission, as there are also designations from the other jurisdictions to sit on that committee. I know he has attended some of those quarterly updates, and, and hopefully has shared some of that information as well with the council. But, you know, I, what I can say is we are on track with our plan to, to build Film Yuba Sutter at this point. So I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Does, first of all, does the, are there any public comments on this item? Bring them back to the council for any comments.
May real quick, Mr. Mayor? Marnie, thank you very much, and it's been very enjoyable so far to see the progress in just one short year. I know Sabrina, in all of her experience, even made a comment at our meeting, that some of the statistics, and the results, and the interest, and, and progress that we've made here locally is beyond what she even expected for a first-year endeavor. And so that's really nice to hear, that not only we're on schedule, but technically ahead of schedule. So it's exciting to see that, and of course, wish her the very best in her recovery, fractured pelvis is no joke.
Yeah.
But thank you, it's, it's, the video was well done, and, and there's so many other places, as I travel around to do my own projects and whatnot, I, I had a growing list of things that make this area so unique for, and probably attractive for folks to come here. So thank you for your hard work getting the word out, and we're looking forward to more. Thank you.
Through the mayor?
Hmm?
I think, I think Film Commission has a lot of exciting opportunities ahead of it. I, I always have to ask this question when we're in partnership with the, the region, are the others on board?
You are my first stop along the way. But what I can say, I can't give you a definitive yes, they are on board, but I've had some indication, at least from a couple of them, that they, they are, but until, until I present to them, I won't know for sure. So I am presenting to Yuba County next week, and then Marysville on February 7th, and Sutter County on February 14th.
Well, keep our fingers crossed that they join with us, then.
Yes, I think they will.
Through the mayor? Marnie, perfect timing when you guys brought this forward, and I was sitting here thinking you was presenting, that I think it was the Chico News Station did a story on, on this exact thing, about, somewhere in the last month, and we're seeing it as Hollywood's looking at Northern California as a whole, so however you can get us plugged into that, I think we need to see this through and get it done.
Thank you, and we're excited to see this through.
Mayor, I just had an observation. The Hard Rock Cafe or Casino has Sacramento written on it, on the bottom. It's just, I would probably edit that out, I don't want Sacramento to get on our parade.
Yeah, I, I under, I hear that a lot about Hard Rock Sacramento, but I appreciate that observation, thank you.
Thank you, Marnie, and I think the first time you brought this along, the, the goal was at some point in the future, there will be a destination where some famous, hopefully some famous movies. the future, there will be a destination where some famous, hopefully some famous movies, plural, are filmed here, and so people are coming here in the future. So having said that, bring them back to the council for action.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution to approve monetary sponsorship request from Film Yuba Sutter for $6,250 to assist in funding the Film Yuba Sutter Film Commission.
Second.
I got a motion from Councilman Shaw, and a second from the vice mayor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Moving to item number 14. Consideration of Planned Development PD-17 in association with Development Plan PD-22-04 Nestory Park Self-Storage. Presentation by Ben Moody.
All right. So good evening, mayor, members of the city council. And so, so bear with me. Really, staff, Ashley really has been the, the key staff person working on this with applicant over the last few months. And so, I'm not here to steal her thunder, but trying to communicate and get it over the, the hump here to finalize it. And so, just for reference, the applicant, David Flaherty, and his team, representatives are here tonight to help answer any questions as we go through it. So, so before you is, in regarding to a planned development and a development plan, so planned development is a fancy name for a special zoning. So we're, we're planning to adjust the zoning slightly for some setbacks, and the development plan is really looking at the site plan of the facility based on the size. And so there are some triggers due to the size of the development plan in the city municipal code why we're here tonight. So it's gone to the planning commission, and we're moving it forward to, to deal with the planned development like a zoning. And so it's really a rezone, so there's going to be introduction of the ordinance change, and then we'll come back as adoption at future meetings. And with that, there's an environmental action. And so the purpose is to consider, consideration of a planned development PD-17 and associate with Development Plan Nestory Park Self-Storage. And so where we're at here is Garden Highway, Southeast Garden Highway at Windship Road. And so on the northeast side of Windship Road, just east of Garden Highway, in between the Richland Housing Campus and then the Windship Road, there is shown in yellow, it's two parcels, approximately five acres in size. On December 14th, went to planning commission with unanimous adoption to recommend the city council consider for approval, the PD-17 and the development plan. So it's a little bit of a mixed zoning right now with those two parcels. And so on one side, you have the smaller parcel that's CM, and then on the east, you have M1, manufacturing. And so what we're proposing is, is to change it from this CM and M1 and make it all PD. And so the proposed use, being the self-storage facility, is, is allowed in both CM and M1. But what we're doing with this zoning, we're making a special zoning to reduce the setbacks, and we'll go into that a little bit here. And so here's a high-level site plan. I don't know if you could see it. We got it color-coded to help a little bit here. And so what's just come on in orange are the storage buildings. And so, so you have, you have Windship Road along the bottom here, and then you have storage buildings along the border of the property. And then in the middle here, you have container storage. And so this is utilizing some of those cargo containers that everybody's familiar with that aren't so attractive, but we've worked with applicant to, to incorporate. And then we also have a, a building, a front office in the front corner here. And then we have some vehicle storage, some vehicle storage here in this area regarding your RVs and boats. So here's a rendering of the, the corner office project, and there's some, there, there's some proposed uses. They include a coffee shop and different, different elements to help activate that site to, to bring people to that area that Mr. Flaherty can definitely add to the conversation. And so, so regarding the setbacks for the zoning, so, so we're, there's, to maximize the use of the site, in that, in those current zoning, and there is a front yard reduced setback from 20 feet to 10 feet, and then a rear setback from 15 feet to zero feet. And so usually that's a big deal in how we look at that, but we think it's appropriate for this site. It's usually where it's a landscape and it's a buffer, but with the layout and the way that the construction is being set up, for that rear yard setback particularly, they're using the wall of the building to be the back. So instead of building a wall and then having landscape in between the, the structure and the wall, we're going to use the wall as, with the landscape wall where they've coordinated with RHA to put some vine, some different vines on it and have a, so it looks decent. But it also, it prevents a path of travel that might be an issue, you know, for, for along from the river bottoms and how it comes through, that's just really unkept area that's, that's not used. And so it's really going to be, instead of building a wall and then having landscaping behind that wall that nobody sees, it's, we're going to incorporate the wall into the design to maximize the site. And then along the front, with this being a manufact, the, we increase, it's high-quality landscaping and, and where it's positioned against adjacent to other manufacturing, we think it's appropriate for that site to maximize it. Project proposal, I'll just run through a couple pictures here real quick. Here's some of the landscaping. Here's some renderings of the, of the site. It's a little hard to take in. Overall south elevation, so you could see the corner office and then some of the buildings without the landscaping here. You have some of the walls that will help screen those containers, those cargo containers, so it's behind the wall. And then here's where, at the planning commission, we ran through the compatibility with neighboring uses, and then also here where we, we talked about who, who's here. And so, so you have RHA on the north side with the road along this portion of it, and then with a proposed senior center that's in, in development right now, that's coming through. And there's been coordination with RHA and the applicant regarding that reduced setback and the landscaping that would be approved. You have existing commercial offices that are built out, and then around to the south and to the east is, is, is M1, where we've heard a lot of various ideas over the years from, from truck stops to small industrial sites. Traffic, self-storage facilities, very low traffic generators, condition added to prohibit commercial truck parking. So we just want to make it clear that it's not for commercial truck parking. So we added a condition in the approval. Regarding the airport, it's consistent with the airport land use plan as far as not being a densely populated for that area. It's compatible with not being a densely populated project. City services, all city services, including water, sewer, and storm drain, stormwater are, are readily available. They might have to extend the stormwater a little bit down the site, down the road. Building designs. And so with that, there's an environmental action. And through consideration of the environmental assessment, it was prepared for, for the project. There is no evidence in the record that the proposed project will have a significant effect on the environment. With that, I recommend tonight that we conduct a public hearing and then introduce an ordinance of the city council, the city of Yuba City approving a planned development 17 for Nestory Park Self-Storage located along the north side of Windship Road, approximately 430 feet east of the intersection of Windship Road and Garden Highway, and associated mitigate negative declaration by title only and waive the first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, just a question on the cargo containers. What are you requiring the outward appearance of those? Are they, are we requiring anything?
So we're requiring this site to be screened. So from, from Windship Road and the adjacent property, there'll be a wall with landscaping.
So nothing? You're not making them paint them? You're not making them?
We haven't seen the, the project submittal yet when, when they come in. I'm sure there will be some discussion when the plans come in regarding what they look like or how they're done, but as, as far as, we haven't looked at the specifics of what the colors of the, from the outside on Windship Road, you're going to see a wall landscaping. And then on the inside, when we see the, the plans, there will definitely be discussions on, you know, they're not, you know, graffiti and how that work. And there's been some preliminary discussions regarding, you know, how they trigger fire or how they're going to be set and anchored down. And I could definitely add to the applicant to add anything to that.
Yeah, I'm curious. You know, I've seen cargo containers that have looked nice, used them in our business, and then I've seen cargo containers that look like rusty old hunks of metal. And if we're going to start a precedent of being able to use these, maybe we need to address that.
Absolutely, note taken. And it would be, through that, it would be considered when the building plan comes in. And so for right now, it's, it's really at the high level with the zoning's right to allow the, the various setbacks. And so right now, cargo containers could come in through our building code with a building permit if they're anchored and adhere to our, our standards, and it's, it's reviewed a small effort tonight. It's really looking at reducing that setback and the overall site, which doesn't incorporate those, those cargo containers, but they could come through without the rezone, if that makes sense.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm on the same lines as Councilman Baumgarten. Cargo containers, are they going to be for product, for, for use as, like warehousing? Or is it going to be a rented cargo container that you can show up and put whatever you want in it? That, that's, because one or the other, if you've got the one where it's product being housed in, in warehouse, you're going to have a significant amount of truck traffic going in and out, moving that product. And that, that's be my question about the cargo containers.
My understanding is they are a building that will be anchored and be utilized as readily available storage containers. And so they're going to rent it as storage containers.
So it wouldn't be something that the, well, we're probably about to learn this right now, but it wouldn't be something the customer brings in, their, their cargo container drops it there and keeps it there? It's going to be already there?
Right. With, with cut-in roll of doors. It's a cheap building.
Just a different, different way to store something, cargo container versus their traditional stuff. It's, makes it a little bit easier. And they're not going to be stacked?
No.
Okay. Go for it, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'm not the mayor anymore. Hold on.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. It's nice to meet everybody. Happy New Year. My name's David Flaherty, and Ben and Scott and Ashley have done an incredible job. It's kind of funny to see Ashley's presentation earlier. I think she's phenomenal. And I've never been to Yuba City in my life until I met the three of them, and they've all helped me at different stages work through the process. But let me talk to a couple of your questions. You make great, great questions. So these shipping containers I bought during Asian Fuel over 25 years ago, I lambanked an acre and a half of downtown San Francisco. And I'm doing a very large $170 million project on that site, and I'm building another storage facility out of cement. These containers are in incredible condition. They're unbelievably clean, and they last forever. If you're familiar with shipping containers, they're all customized. There's 34,000 net rentable. And so the idea was, where could I go to bring these and actually utilize them? So our business model's adaptive reuse of fail retail, either for storage or logistics across the country. And frankly, Yuba City became the closest location I could make a deal with Nar, the former owner. And then I met the housing authority with Ashley's help and have a great relationship with all my neighbors. I met my site contractor for the first time tonight, and he's talking about doing the sidewalks and curbing on the other side of Windship, where we go all the way to Garden Highway. And so basically, we kind of clean up that street once and for all. And I'm giving all my dirt to Nar under contract, but I also offered the housing authority the dirt for their new planned development, where they need the dirt for their foundations. And they were nice enough to give me about a 12-inch strip to landscape all the back. And to answer your question, right now, I'm showing you plans where everything's screened completely. You wouldn't see a single thing. The problem I'm dealing with, which I'm sure you're hearing from other people, the cost of building walls today is absolutely insane. And so if you were to go to Gerald and Barnville in the Bayview in San Francisco, you would see that the shipping containers are the wall. There is no wall in San Francisco. And our homeless situation in the Bayview is much worse than what you have here in Yuba City. It's a war zone around my property right now. And for my neighbors and I, it's been just incredible stuff to deal with. That said, these shipping containers have protected my customers for 25-plus years. And so the idea was to bring them up here, screen them completely with landscaping on Windship. I'm working with Ashley right now. I got to bring back to planning some, some drawings that kind of show what I think I could do to make this look really, really nice, but also try to reduce some of my costs. And your fire marshal was fantastic last week. He's really leaning in to help me, which, as you know, is not easy these days when life safety's involved. And so that's kind of a giving you a synopsis. And then let me speak to Nest Cafe. So in our adaptive reuse of fail retail, we bring community back. We're buying buildings that have been vacant for 10 years. Malls are dead. I mean, if I showed you the stuff I'm developing around the US, these towns welcome us with open arms because we're bringing back jobs and other things. So in Machesity Park, Illinois, that just opened today, I put a bar, a local bar, Benny's, and I put in a gaming parlor. And I'm trying to put businesses in that will make it. You know, younger people can make a living, they can operate for me. I'm their landlord essentially, and so I've had to apply for gaming licenses and liquor licenses, which I've never dealt with. I believe that we'd want to do the same here. I actually think to make money, and Chad's a local guy that I'm working with here to see if I can help put him in business, I've got to come up with a business that makes real money. And so, you know, we're talking to your gaming tribes, we're doing some very unique things, similar to what I've done elsewhere, to see if I could make it happen in California. And the idea was, I had dinner tonight at your Sutter Brewery, I've talked to Scott, the owner, I've talked to Bridge Coffee, and when I met Ashley, I said, hey, can you introduce me to these people? So we're thinking about using Windship as kind of your farmer's market, food truck, kind of a community activation site. But that street dead right now, it's safe. We can kind of control it. Right now, it's got some homelessness going on, it's got some dumping, but your guy Boone was great tonight. He just texted me. I didn't mean rude. I'm answering emails while I'm sitting here, and he's going to have your forces out there at the end of the month to try to help me clean up the property. I cleaned it myself, and then unfortunately, people came back and dumped on it. And so, you know, I think what I'm bringing to Yuba is something very different than what self-storage looks like in this community. And then the goal is, now that Ashley's been promoted, I'm excited to work with her, and she could really help me figure out who's going to help, you know, Chad and I operate. And Kyle Sanchez is my civil, which I know you guys know. So it's been a really fun project. We don't have it all worked out yet in terms of the community activation. It's a work in progress because coffee shops don't make any money, and so it's hard. You know, when I worked with the owner of Bridge, he's very honest with me about his margins. And so he wants me to buy the coffee, but he really doesn't want to operate for me, which I get. And so I'm having to Rubik's Cube this one for California to make it work for everybody. But I expect to have something very quickly put together, and everybody's helping me. So other questions I can ask? And Ben, nice job.
Any further questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The public hearing on planned development PD-17 in association with development plan PD-22-24 Nestory Park Self-Storage is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none? Seeing no further comment on this issue, I am now closing the public hearing and bringing the banner back to council.
And Shannon's not here.
Okay. Through the mayor. I can make a motion to introduce an ordinance of the city council, the city of Yuba City approving a planned development 17 for Nestory, is it Nestory?
Nestory.
Thank you. Nestory Park Self-Storage located along the north side of Windship Road, approximately 430 feet east of the intersection. approximately 430 feet east of the intersection of Windship Road, Garden Highway, parcel numbers 53-500-008 and 53-500-035, and an associated mitigated negative declaration by title only and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a motion from Councilman Boom Garden and a second from Councilman Viscoli. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Moving to item number 15. Consideration of General Plan Amendment GPA 22-06 and Rezone 22-08 in association with tentative parcel map, TPM 22-04 Spirit Drive Parcel Map. Presentation by, once again, Ben Moody.
All right. So, um, Spirit Drive Parcel Map. So what we're talking about is the southeast corner of El Margarita Road and Highway 20. And so there's a vacant parcel there right next to John L. Sullivan, um, across from River Valley High School, that recently, um, has, has applied and gone through the process with the planning commission for a tentative parcel map to split the property into three parcels. And then with that, they've also requested to change the zoning and the general plan land use. And so we'll get into that here. And so currently, it's approximately 20 acres, 19.99 acres of El Margarita Road. Um, may, may be familiar with it as, as the Calvary Christian Center, future home of the Calvary Christian Center, where there's, where there's an use permit for a future proposed church site. Um, what has come forward here is to split the parcel into three parcels. So, um, two four-acre parcels and then with a remainder, about 12 acres. And so with that, the, um, what do I do? So, so the back, so it's, it's, there was a multi-part to this thing. Besides splitting the property, we, the zoning is commercial office. And so, and it wants to be changed to, um, commercial retail for a potential auto dealership. Um, but when we analyze it, we look at it at the worst, um, worst case possible, but it, it's retail, um, for C3 use. And so, um, what I'm trying to work through is, what you see right now is, is the office, which is the existing zoning, is in the blue. And then what's proposed is a regional commercial, changing the blue to, to purple for eight acres of the site. And so in addition to this, there's an old overlay zone, X19, that was specifically was created in the early 2000s, maybe late 90s. Um, looking for Ashley here. I can't remember my, the discussion we had earlier, but it was, it was an overlay zone that when that area was first developed, there was concerns about implementing the general plan policies where there's the new general plan coming through. There was unknown, you know, the traffic and impact fees weren't established. And so in order to put some brakes on development to make sure, um, infrastructure was put in, they had this overlay zone, X19, and, and a portion of it called for, um, traffic signals on, on Walton or to the southeast that just aren't applicable anymore since, fast forward 20-plus years, where we now have a new traffic model, general plan and use and, and impact fees. And so with the review of that, it just needs to go away. It's not applicable anymore. And so, so with the change request today is to remove that, that X19. Proposed eight acres are proposed to be rezoned to general commercial C3 zone district. The remaining 12 acres, 12 acres remain unchanged. So compatibility with neighboring uses, the project site is, is bordered by four different land uses. As discussed, you have the highway to the north. To the west, you have a mix of single-family residential with manufacturing. To the south, you have the River Valley High School. Into the east, you have the auto dealership. So traffic measures, um, so there's a lot of discussion about that area, about El Margarita Road and what's it going to trigger. And then there's also discussion about, at, at what point in time, um, historically, a lot of the traffic analysis had to be done upfront with a zoning change or with the general land use. Because Sequo, it, it was a requirement that it had to be analyzed for the level of service. So they wanted to make sure that you weren't going to turn a, um, a roadway from A to F. Um, and so what, what has, what has happened partially is that Sequo now looks at it as vehicle miles traveled. It's not so much if, if, if you're going to make people wait longer at the intersection, they want to know if you're going to generate more trips. And so based on this area and how it was analyzed, we're not anticipating more trips with this, with this project, where it's, it's considered exempt based on the location using the land use maps provided. Um, but with this, we've also, um, the mitigation, you have to have consistency with the general plan. And so we've put some mitigation measures in there that, that prior to, um, development, there needs to be a traffic study done that then analyzes what their fair share cost is for any impacts to El Margarita Road at 20, um, along Spirit Drive and their fair share in that, in that area, and then also at Franklin. And so that's part of the discussion in moving forward with the development, that there'll be talk with engineering and with, um, the city as far as how do we implement that portion with the development. And, and also a, a, a point to, um, to highlight is that due to the size, four acres, they will, if a, if a development comes forward, most likely due to the size thresholds the city has in the zoning code, you will see a development plan. So similar to what we just looked at with the Nestory Park, if, if a development comes forward due to the size, it would come forward to the city council again. So there'd be a review, a comprehensive review of it with more information regarding the, the, um, traffic, if that makes sense. And so if it's a, if it's car dealership, usually, you know, it's, it's off-peak demand, um, the car, you know, it's a different level of traffic versus a school. And so depending on what site that brings, we would analyze it then. Noise. Clarify construction noise. The facility may be noticeable at high. So this is just going through a little bit of the environmental analysis where mitigation was measured, was, it was added regarding the construction noise, which is pretty standard. Um, and then just note the city services, uh, city water and wastewater are available to the property and it drains to the Livock Canal. And so with the environmental assessment prepared, prepared for the project and based upon the list of identified mitigation measures, staff has determined there is no evidence in the record of proposed project will have a significant effect on the environment. And so with that, we're recommending conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution, city council approving the environmental assessment. Basically A and B. You know, I'll read through those and you maybe go reference, however, makes it better for Shannon to get through it. So, so B, adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Yuba City approving environmental assessment 22-15 by adopting a mitigated neg declaration prepared for Spirit Drive Parcel Map Project and adopt General Plan Amendment 22-06 for approximately eight acres located at the southeast corner of State Route 20, El Margarita Road, accessory parcel number 63-010-141. And introduce an ordinance to the city council, the city of Yuba City to adopt Rezone 22-08 for the Spirit Drive Parcel Map Project located at the southeast corner of State Route 20 and El Margarita Road, accessory parcel number 63-010-141 by title only and waive the first reading. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? No questions? Okay. Seeing none? Public hearing on General Plan Amendment GPA 22-06 and Rezone 22-08 in association with tentative parcel map, PTM, uh, 22-04 Spirit Drive Parcel Map is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. And we do have a speaker card from... No, we don't. Round one. I'm sorry. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any public comments? Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Sean Menard with MHM Engineering, and I represent the applicant on this project. Um, I mean, I don't have much to say on it. It's a pretty straightforward project. Uh, the regional commercial zoning or the general plan designation is critical and the C3 zoning is, uh, both are critical to this project, what they want to do ultimately. So if you have any questions on the parcel map, why it came out, the eight acres, uh, I'll try to answer them. If not, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comment from the public on this, number 15? Hearing no further public, uh, comment on this issue, I'm, I am now closing public hearing and bringing them back, a matter back to council.
All right. Through the mayor?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Yuba City approving environmental assessment EA 22-15 by adopting a mitigated negative declaration prepared for Spirit Drive Parcel Map Project and adopt General Plan Amendment 22-06 for approximately eight acres located at the southeast corner of State Route 20 and El Margarita Road, accessory parcel number 63-010-141. And introduce an ordinance to the city council, the city of Yuba City to adopt Rezone 22-08 for Spirit Drive Parcel Map Project located at the southeast corner of State Route 20, Colusa Highway and El Margarita Road, accessories parcel number 63-010-141 by title only and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion from Councilman Shaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Boomburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Eyes have it. Item number 16, request to establish planned development PD 15 and approve, approval of a development agreement for the Chima Ranch Development, excuse me, Chima Ranch tentative subdivision map, SM 22-07. Presentation, presentation by Doug Libby, uh, W.D. Director, Development Services.
Through the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
I need to recuse myself from this item as I have a business relationship with some of the parties that are identified. While I have no monetary value in this, uh, just for transparency, uh, speaking with council, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, once again, Doug Libby with Development Services. So this item, Plan Development Number 15, uh, and a development agreement associated with the Chima Ranch subdivision. So to give you a little background, the planning commission considered this item at its December 14th meeting last month. Uh, there were no persons who spoke in opposition to the project. And after conducting a public hearing, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of PD 15 and the proposed development agreement to your council and contingently approved the subdivision map, which is shown on the screen. And I'll have a, probably a larger picture of it in a moment. Okay. The project site is 14.86 acres. It's located on the southwest part of our city, on west side of Sandborne Road, immediately west of the intersection of Pebble Beach Drive and Sandborne Road. Uh, it's just north of the 95-lot West Sandborne subdivision that was approved in November of 2021. Now, I think it's important to recognize that last year, this area, and I'm, what I'm talking about is from Sandborne to, uh, El Margarita, excuse me, Sandborne to George Washington, Lincoln to Boge, was annexed, that chunk was annexed to Yuba City. And so we're starting to see projects, uh, come forward to develop some of these areas. Uh, so you'll see some of these areas, like to the north, has single-family residences and orchards, has to the south, the orchards, but it's going to be the West Sandborne subdivision, has the existing developed city, uh, single-family homes to the east, and as well to the west, single-family residence and orchards. And all of that is within the incorporated limits of our city. Now, this project will divide the property into 82 single-family residential lots. Two of the lots include construction of accessory dwelling units. The project has a density of 6.3 residences per gross acre. Uh, the proposed planned development overlay will modify some of the development standards, which I'll go into in a moment, as well as the proposed development agreement. Now, with regard to zoning compliance, uh, zoning was established for this project under the rescinded Lincoln East specific plan, where an environmental impact report was prepared and adopted. The project includes both R1, single-family, and R2, two-family residential zoning. And you can see the, on the map, the proposed subdivision area located right here. Now, with regard to the overlay, it will modify the, some of the standards to provide flexibility to accommodate increased project densities and a more compact design. So now some of the modifications include reducing minimum lot sizes for corner lots by about 100 square feet, a reduced minimum lot width, increased maximum percent lot coverage, reduced garage setbacks. And in that one, what we mean is going from 20 feet down to 18 and a half feet, and reduce some of the rear yard setbacks. Those are laid out in detail on page three of your staff report. And if you'd like, I can go into more depth. Now here's the proposed subdivision map. Now, along the full frontage of Sandborne Road, the project will be, uh, will widen Sandborne, will also install, um, curb, gutter, and detached sidewalk. Within the subdivision, the extension of Pebble Beach Drive will have a detached sidewalk. Once you go into the, the neighborhood streets, they have an option of either developing with attached or detached sidewalk. It's important to note that the intersection of Pebble Beach, as well as with Sandborne, is going to become a four-way stop. Now, we did receive a public comment, uh, from the Hook family. And looking at accessory records, they live at this, this property right here. So they laid out, so, three suggestions. They referenced providing a street light at Pebble Beach Drive and the Sandborne Road intersection. Uh, they suggest widening Sandborne to four lanes and providing turn lanes on Sandborne at the Pebble Beach-Sandborne intersection. So to address some of these, the, um, the reason why a street light is not, uh, being proposed is, in short, it just doesn't meet the warrants for it. Whether, when you incorporate the 92-lot subdivision just to the south, as well as this project, a four-way stop, uh, more than sufficiently meets the needs. There's a suggestion widening the road to four lanes. It's important to note, if you look at our circulation element in our general plan, those, uh, both Pebble Beach and Sandborne are collector roadways. Uh, under the general plan, those are two-lane roadways. Now, as a collector, they lead to arterials. That's going to be Lincoln to the north and Boge to the south. Those roads will ultimately be widened to four lanes, uh, in the future. Now with regard to traffic, in addition to the street improvements that I just talked to you about, uh, the developer will be required to pay, uh, city traffic impact fees for each lot that is developed. In addition, the developer will pay a fair share cost towards the future signalization of Sandborne and Lincoln Road and Sandborne and Boge Road. So the two arterials to the north and the south. In addition, the developer will pay a fair share cost of a bus stop on the west side of Sandborne Road, just north of Boge Road. And based upon these requirements, traffic is, is anticipated to be less than significant. Now with regard to environmental review, I think it's important to recall that the density of this project was originally analyzed as part of our 2004 general plan. When the city approved the now-recended Lincoln East specific plan and also adopted an environmental impact report, again, density as proposed was analyzed. So for this project, a mitigated negative declaration has been proposed. There were areas where, uh, potential impacts were identified under geology and soils, greenhouse gases, hydrology, water quality, noise, and transportation. But mitigation measures were included in each of those categories, which the applicant has agreed to incorporate into their project to reduce impacts to a less than significant level. We think it's also important to note that with regard to noise, we took mitigation from the previous EIRs and carried it forward into this project. Now, the planned development, the municipal code requires specific findings be made in order to approve it. Both the planning commission and staff believe those findings can be made and are laid out in the, uh, proposed ordinance before you this evening. With regard to the development agreement, DA's are allowed by straight law. They address issues beyond standard planning, zoning, development, and design standards. There are certain things There are certain things they need to include, but each agreement is largely unique and must be considered on its own terms. The proposed DA tonight was modeled off of the one approved for the Newcombe Ranch subdivision. The key points, in any agreement, there must be something for each side. For the developer, as you can imagine, heading into some economic uncertainty, interest rates, they're looking for a longer life on the subdivision. So they're asking for a 10-year subdivision map term that may be extended by mutual agreement. Now, for the city, the developer will pay an interim neighborhood park fee, adjusted for inflation, in the amount of $3,206 per single-family unit until neighborhood parks are included in a comprehensive park and recreation impact fee update. So currently, in our impact fees, neighborhood parks are not included. However, the former Lincoln East specific plan area, as well as our Boge-Stewart master plan area, both include neighborhood parks. So this is a mechanism to collect an additional park fee, so we make sure that those neighborhood parks can get built out. So the recommendation for you tonight, conduct a public hearing, introduce an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Uba City, approving environmental assessment EA 2214 by adopting a mitigated neg deck prepared for PD 15, SM 2207, and rezoning APN 6502009 and 65020010, and planned development 15, and waive the first reading. The last recommendation is introduce an uncodified ordinance of the City Council of the City of Uba City, establishing a development agreement with Interwest Homes Corporation, a California corporation, for the development of the Chima Ranch subdivision for APN 6502009 and 65020010, and waive the first reading. Shawn Menard with MHM Engineering is the project engineer here to answer any questions for you tonight, as well as myself, so thank you very much.
Any questions from the council? Yes, through the mayor?
Sure.
So a 10-year agreement seems long. What has been standard?
I would say that the city has not had a, just a consistent timeframe. I've seen, we have development agreements currently for certain projects that would go out to, have been out for 20, 25 years, have gone out for, I've seen one that goes out to 2036. Those type of timeframes can be just too long. But a 10-year timeframe, when you think about the economic cycles up and down that jurisdictions go through, we think it's important to provide an opportunity so that when the market turns, and they feel it's right, that they have a project that they could then start building out. And so hopefully, a 10-year timeframe will allow them to weather the economic uncertainties that can be out there.
What's the downside?
They're going to need to, I don't think there really is one. They need to pay the, all the current fees the city may have adopted, and then at 10 years, you have the opportunity to say, no, thanks.
But during that 10-year period, their fees are fixed to today's rates?
No. They can, they will have to pay the impact fees as adopted by the city whenever they choose to develop.
Okay. Second question, and I just didn't see it in there, and I'm sure it's there. Mr. Libby, is two-story prohibition, are these single-story residences, or are we allowing double-story or two-story residences or multi-story at all?
There's no restriction. The ordinance, the zoning ordinance does not prohibit the establishment of two-story homes.
So when these things come to the council and place us in a bad spot, because we've allowed a two-story next to a single-story, was there any discussion with the developer about limiting these to single-story?
In this particular case, because this area is not built out, we're going into a long-established city growth area, along the, you have Sanborn on the east, and then you have basically what's been farmland on all our sides. You're not going to be building, for example, two-story homes up against an area where only has single story in place today.
Doesn't the south bump up against the Baines annexation?
It bumps up against the Baines, the West Sanborn subdivision, yes, but that has not built out.
But it could.
Yes.
So...
That project doesn't have a condition to be single-story either, so they can build two-story.
Do you see where I'm headed? You don't? Whenever we get into these situations where there are or aren't restrictions, it seems like all of a sudden, whether it's a CCR or some sort of HOA thing, is that somebody decides to throw a two-story house up next to a single-story house, and then it comes to us to have to try to settle out.
The, I would say that when someone proposes to a subdivision exist next to an existing development, yes, we try to take that into account and put on some conditions, but in this case, neither areas is developed. They could either develop, one could go first versus the other, there's, there's no way of telling at this point.
Any other questions from council?
So that was, that was a lot of information, and I did have one question for you. When you addressed the concern about the letter, the widening, the Sanborn to four lanes, did I hear you mention that in the future that Walton and Lincoln are going to be widened to four lanes?
So Lincoln Road to the north is an arterial. Ultimately, that would someday get widened to four lanes as an arterial.
So Lincoln?
Lincoln Road.
Okay.
Then Boge Road to the south will, as an arterial, would also get widened.
Okay.
Per the general plan.
Okay. Any other questions from council? This public hearing to establish planned development PD 15 and approval of a development agreement for the Chima Ranch tentative subdivision map SM 22-07 is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. And we do have a card by Heather Esmond.
Thank you. So Heather Esmond, I live on Lincoln, and I'm one of those properties that you were referring to. So the bottleneck that goes out towards Sanborn, so that would be taking part of my front yard for that four lane, and I didn't realize there was going to be a light on that corner too. So hopefully, that won't take longer than it takes to develop the rest of the properties around there, because it's already incredibly dangerous. There were times where I was rarely at home, but still, I experienced two accidents on that corner there, where people were not, not following the street signs. So I would have actually, I'm totally for then a light at that point. And I'm glad that you also mentioned the stop sign, because that was one of the things that I had put on that card, was that they definitely need to have a stop sign then on Pebble Beach and Sanborn, considering that you have new developments, families coming in, and the park is on the other side of Sanborn, just a couple of blocks from, along Pebble Beach. So you're going to have a lot of families wanting to go back and forth across there, and there is a bus, which is completely full at 7:00 in the morning, that goes through that area as well, picking up kids going over to River Valley. So they're not going to go back and get a smaller bus. They need the bus the entire day, unfortunately, for the kids coming back and forth when that's full. But anyway, so the one thing that, the reason why I was mentioning this has to do with this stretch of land, or this road anyways, that the sheriffs, one of the sheriffs that I was talking to said that that's a really difficult section right there. There's a lot of people driving by there really fast, and I don't know if that's because everybody in the city knows that that's B6, and the sheriff's offices aren't willing to pull them over, so they just, incredibly loud over where we are. I don't know how loud it is where you guys are, but it's really bad. And if you've gone down Lincoln, you'll see that they've been doing their donuts on the road, because when I walk my dog, I'm like, oh, well, there's some new ones now this weekend. But I appreciate, and please make sure that as soon as it's possible to put that stop sign in there and not wait, the, it's, it's really tough. It would help to minimize that kind of traffic going back and forth, because then if they had to stop, whether they stop or not, that's another story, but if they have to stop, they might discontinue using that as one of their super-fast stretches that they have. So that's basically, oh, and there's also, if you're interested, then ask Ben Moody for a, this is a draft, for a copy, and you'll see which sections of the streets are going to be four lanes, and which ones are going to be two lanes, according to the plan. And for us, at Plan Build Out on Lincoln, is going to be 19,000 daily traffic volumes, 19,000 trips or cars going through and across in front of my house, and in front of your house is about 27,000. So you can just ask him for a copy if you'd like to see. Thank you.
Okay, any further comment from the public on this one?
I'm Tony Carlin, 636 Anna Drive, Uba City. It was mentioned that there are going to be no community parks in this little community. I live in a subdivision that has no community parks whatsoever, and realize that for little kids, a playground is properly necessary. So I just wanted to lay out that concern, because it's been a bane of ours since we moved in in 2005. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, oh, are we going to comment on that? Yeah, go ahead.
Shawn Menard, mayor, members of the council. I'm Shawn Menard with MHM Engineering. Our client is Interwest Homes on this project. We've also been working with the Chima family. We've been working on this project, when we first started this project, the interest rates were like 4%, and, you know, then they jumped up to 6.5%. We weren't going to do a DA at the beginning, and Mark was asking about the 10-year timeframe. We actually asked for 10 plus a five-year extension, similar to the concept that was in the Newcombe Ranch. Actually, it was 20 plus two fives for a total of 30. So we did cut it down, and after working with, you know, city staff, they cut it to 10 years. And the main reason we did that is because if we didn't have that assurance that tentative map is going to be available for at least five to 10 years, our client, Interwest Homes, is probably going to drop out of the project, because they saw what happened last time. If you remember, 2008, everything just fell through, and it didn't start coming back until about 15 years later. So there's a possibility 10 years is not enough, but they're comfortable enough, 10 years, that's why we asked for, we asked for 15, we got 10. So like Doug said, it's a compromise between both sides, and 10 is what we compromised on. So that's the 10-year. As for the project, the zoning, phase one or village one is R1. We didn't really have to ask for a lot of concessions on that one, or we wouldn't have even done a PD. But phase two is in the R2 zoning, and the way the City of Uba City's R2 zoning is set up right now, you basically can't do single-family detached lots. It's set up, a density requirement is 14 units per acre, but they have a minimum lot size of 60 foot wide, I think it is, and in order to get that density, you would have to have halfplexes, duplexes, fourplexes, or a small apartment complex, and that doesn't really fit the neighborhood or what our client builds. And so we've done this on other projects. A prime example is up on Pease Road. There's a 120, I think it's about 120 lot subdivision up there, has almost the same criteria that we've asked for in this one. We went one step further on this one, if you recall, some of you were on the council the time when we got the Boge-Stewart master plan approved. Yeah, that's the project up there in North Uba City, but there, the criteria we used for the PD zoning was basically the R2 zoning criteria that was developed for the Boge-Stewart master plan. And so we didn't really reinvent the wheel, we just copied that for this project. And so then we just used it for both, so we have, it's not a very big project. I know some people think an 80 lot subdivision is big, but in the scheme of things and building houses, that's sufficient for one type of product. You know, have four, three or four model types, but it'll be one type of product. And yes, there will be two-story houses. You get in these smaller lots, it's almost a necessity to have two-story houses. And you're going to see more two-story houses as development goes. The time of single, single-story houses are going to be further and further between, because people want more house, smaller lots, and that's just the market now. Maybe it'll change, but that's the current market. The one item, and I read the letter the same way Doug did, the request for a street light at the intersection of Pebble Beach and Sanborn Road, that's, a street light is standard in Uba City. When we do a design, putting a street light is standard. I read it, when I first read it, I thought it was a signal also. They were asking for a street light, and we, there will be a street light at that corner, you know, so there'll be light at that corner, so where there's stop signs, they can see. So just want to point that out. We can meet one of their criterias, but, you know, four lanes and the turnpockets are not going to be possible, so. If you have any other questions, I'll try to answer them, but overall, our client's excited. I don't know if it'll happen this year with the current market situation, but as soon as the market changes, this will be one of their higher priorities. It's a different-sized product that they do. They're working on some other projects that are a little bit bigger, but this will be, fit their smaller entry-level market, so.
Through the mayor, thanks, Shawn, for the, for the explanation. Makes sense on the 10-year agreement. I certainly think that, you know, we're going to go through several cycles. My concern on the two-story is just making sure that people understand that that's, you know, I know the densities are going to get smaller. I listened to something from the governor just yesterday about, you know, if we don't do some of these housing things, then we're going to place ourselves at some financial jeopardy. So density is going to be important. I just want to make sure that when, and this isn't necessarily to you, and I can communicate with Interwest, just make sure people realize that even, that the two-stories are a possibility, so that we don't get that pushback when it happens. So it sounds to me like you're going to put all two-story in here anyway. I think the densities that we keep hearing about are going to demand that. I just don't want to have to arbitrate between a property owner on a CCR issue or something else like we've had to do in the past.
I'm very familiar with one of those projects that caused a lot of controversy.
Yeah.
But I think you're going to see more and more two-stories, so it's going to be less of an issue as we move forward.
Makes sense. I appreciate it. Thanks.
And just to add on to that, it's definitely, we could work with Interwest and developers going forward in that Lincoln East specific plan area to, they could, they could put a note on the deed, so when they, when somebody buys that, or there could be a note that there might be future two-story homes around you.
I don't think it'd be a deed. They have a disclosure list.
Disclosure.
Holly, if Holly was here from Interwest, she'd describe all her things, they have to be friendly to ag, and, you know, right to farm, and there's a, there's a huge list of things that they have to disclose, and that'd be easy to disclose, there could be two-story.
Yeah, so we could definitely work to add that into the disclosure, and then going forward, we could just make sure it's memorialized in the conditions, so that it doesn't turn into a problem.
Thank you. Any further comment from the public on this issue? Closing, now closing public hearing, bring back the matter, back to council.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I, we had a really good question from the public, and I wanted to go back and try to answer that question. And the question was, pertains to parks. And so if you look at the land use map for the area that used to be the Lincoln East specific plan area, you will see, back here's the project site, there's a larger city park here, and then you'll see the smaller neighborhood parks throughout the area. And so there is parkland that's going to be developed in this area, although not on this project site. But every home constructed will be contributing to our park and recreation through the impact fees. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bringing it back to council for action.
Through the mayor. I'd like to introduce an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Uba City, approving plan development number 15 for the Chima Ranch subdivision, SM 22-07, located in the southwest portion of the city, along the west side of Sanborn Road, and immediately west of the intersection of Pebble Beach Drive and Sanborn Road, assessors parcel 65-020-009 and 65- and 65-020-010, and an associated mitigated negative declaration by title only and waived the first reading. Also to introduce item C, or to move to, for item C, introduce an uncodified ordinance of the city council, the city of Yuba City approving a development agreement for the Chima Ranch subdivision map SM 22-07 between the city of Yuba City and Inner West Homes Corporation, a California corporation, to develop 82 single-family lots on 14.86 acres located in the southwest portion of the city, along the west side of Sandborne Road, immediately west of the intersection of Pebble Beach Drive and Sandborne Road, Assessor's Parcel 65-020-009 and 65-020-010, by title only and waive the first reading.
I've got a motion from Councilmember Boomgarden. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Councilmember, Vice Mayor Harris. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have three ayes and one nay and one excused. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to future agenda items. Future agenda items, this is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Any council, any comments from council? Seeing none. Okay, then moving on to reports and communications. The following reports and communications items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on the items unless, on this, under this section, unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. And number two, city manager's report, city manager.
Thank you. So we have a special council workshop scheduled for January 26 at 8:00 AM, start at the Harvest Room. So the draft agenda currently includes reviewing council's priorities, getting department presentations for their accomplishments of 2022, discussion topics including speeding sideshows, fireworks, boat RV storage, mobile vendors, city tree maintenance and sidewalk issues, campaign signs, campaign paperwork, and community workshops. And then we will conclude the workshop with a discussion related to council's 2023 priorities. We also have a community meeting scheduled for the city's surplus property on Walton Avenue, south of the Moose Lodge, for February 2 at 6:00 PM at the Moose Lodge, and that's open to the public. I'd also just like to note with these last couple of weeks of storms, the, the city employees have just done a fantastic job of responding to the storms all hours of the night, multiple cross-departmental effort to make sure that we can keep, you know, all of the infrastructure running, that we can address citizens' needs, and just a huge thank you to staff. And then one thing that I'm excited to report is that Orville Reservoir, as of midnight last night, is at 57% of total capacity, 104% for the historical average, and is that, is our primary water supply for Yuba City. It's very exciting to see Orville at this level. And even though other reservoirs in California, it's kind of a mixed bag, some of the smaller ones are at their historical average, there are a few that are below the historical average, but these storms made a huge impact in the storage capacity within California. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to city council reports, and we'll start this evening with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of quiet, as one might expect, as we turn through into the new year, but there were several meetings that I think are of some note. One was the continued discussions with partners on the project Home Key. And again, hopeful that we can bring something relatively quickly to, to the council's attention as we continue to work through that process. LAFCO met last, last week. We selected a new chairman, that will be Supervisor Conant, and I was selected as the vice chair. And we are going to be recruiting eventually for an executive director for the LAFCO as well. On a bit of challenging news is the fire MSR is still not complete, and we do not have, I can, I can report to you that we do not have a finished date on that, however, we are, are working on that. Attended, along with several of my other council members, the Martin Luther King ceremony. Opted not to walk once the severe thunderstorm warning came out across the top of the bridge, figuring that that's probably not a real good place to be if it decides to go lightning-wise. But we did, we did attend the, I guess you would call it the show. And it was, it was good. There was a lot of folks there, and it's always, I think, you know, the significance of Martin Luther King and what he did to our country is certainly something worthy of recognizing. Attended the swearing-in of the county supervisors for Supervisor Baines and, and Vice Chair, well, now Chairman Baines and Vice Chair Conant. I am, I'm going to close up, well, two things, let me back up here. Public Works, Parks, City Fire, City Police, and all those others that Donna just mentioned. Three weeks of an onslaught of, of, you know, heavy rain, wind like I've never seen here. And I've spent quite a few years here now, over 40, and responded in some of that. I, I can't, can't thank all those city staff enough because it was just like an endless pounding, whether it's the heavy rain or the wind, so please communicate that. I'm, I'm becoming more concerned, and I mentioned this in a meeting this morning, about El Margarita Road, and I didn't bring it up during the item for the Spirit Way and, you know, the Calvary Christian rezoning. But I think it's one of those things that everybody's aware of, and it's time we look at, to find out what we can do there, if anything, to limit that intersection there off of Highway 20 onto El Margarita Road. Because right now, unsignaled, and I don't know what the right term is, our former CHB commander can call it when it's, it's not uncontrolled, but it's uncontrolled, is, am I right? I mean, you.
It's controlled because of the stop sign.
Yeah.
Not signalized, is what you're saying.
And, and, you know, I'd rather not be in the reaction mode to a catastrophe. I'd rather us at least begin actively exploring what, if anything, we could do there to improve safety. And I know there's a lot of moving parts to that, and I know that we'll, that's what I'm leaving the council with if you start to hear more about that. You know, obviously, it would take all of, well, at least a majority of our support to try to, to start moving through a process, if you're all in agreement, to say, hey, look, we need to do something here, or at least try. Because to leave it the way it is, is, in my opinion, I don't want to be too dramatic, it's inviting disaster. With that, I'm good. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Next would be Councilmember Piscuali.
Thank you, Mayor. Not a whole lot to report. I'm going to the academy for city council members at the state the next three days. Looking forward to that, learn some new things that I don't already know. And I continue to meet with the directors of the city. I had meetings with both chiefs, fire, and police, and brought up the speed of what they're all about, what their visions are, and it's very enlightening for me. And that's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Moving on to Councilmember Shaw.
Got me off guard, changed it up. Like with everyone else, the change of the year, just settling in. Did attend the swearing-in of Supervisor Baines as the new chair and Vice Chair Conant, and our new district attorney, Jen Dupree. So excited to have that change there. And outside of that, Vice Mayor Harris, thanks for covering the special meeting with Transit as I've actually been out of state at our ranch, getting it prepared for the spring. And thank you to our city employees and the team, watching it from afar while I was out of state, amazing what was going on as I was watching the news media, kind of everything fall apart, but getting the reports out of our city, how it was just like a machine and taking care of things. So Ms. Langley, thank you to you and your team, it's just incredible what they've done, so really thank you. And with that, hit the ground running is 2023.
Thank you, sir, and I'm glad you made it back safely and you're feeling better. Vice Mayor Harris?
While we're on the topic, I'll reiterate my appreciation as well for all the work city staff has done, both the folks that work outside and inside. It's been a lot going on. I'm sure the front counter has been busy as well. And so everybody's just stepping up as they always do and doing the right thing in the right way. So it's much appreciated. Typical for the time of year, meetings have been kind of light, a lot were postponed or canceled for the holidays. However, once again, I also attended the swearing-in for Chair Baines and Vice Chair Conant and our DA, and it was a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since we've seen this room that full. It was, it was nice to be a part of that. As mentioned, I attended Yuba City Transit, and the calls with Home Key Project continue. We're making slow but steady progress, and I'm looking forward to our one we have tomorrow. I also attended the Regional Water Authority for the first time this year, and that, that meeting basically consisted of appointing or otherwise electing the new slate of officers for 2023. The MLK March that the folks did across the Fifth Street Bridge and ended, I don't remember the name of the church, but it's Johnny Burke's Church over on C Street, what's it called?
New Wesleyan.
New, what?
New Wesleyan.
New Wesleyan Church on C Street in Marysville. I gotta tell you, I, I left after their, kind of a good mood for a few days. It was just really well put together, real community event. You could feel it even when you walked in the room before they started. It was really pleasurable and a pleasant morning, so. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So as was stated earlier, there were some cancellations this past month. Gilser was canceled, Cetera Buse Flood Control Agency was canceled. But what was stated in the newspaper was they were awarded $4 million through DWR through the, for the Cetera Buse East Levy, which will shore up that area, and construction will begin in 2025, which is very good news to hear for folks to live in the South Cedric County. Mosquito, election of officers, quarterly review of district investments, and whether or not they were going to get flood insurance, and I think they went with that. I think we're going to be looking at a busy mosquito season without, that goes without saying. Oh, we mentioned earlier, at least the Vice Mayor did, the Transit Authority, and the question was, the timing on the question was perfect because they are looking at a better way to utilize and to, to address the needs of moving people around, not just in our community, but the region. This is an entity that saw a drop in ridership long before COVID happened, so the timing on that was fortuitous. And I would just like to reiterate what my colleague said about city staff. Man, it was all hands on deck with this weather, it's just been, just been amazing. And I would like to say thank you to our city manager for being proactive and putting stuff out on social media that in turn we can, we can do as well because typically, when you're downstream, you get really, really nervous. And, and I had multiple conversations with people going like, okay, well, I know it's raining, but there's, there's still quite a bit of room behind those, those reservoirs, so this is, this is good. I attended the MLK service with my colleagues. And, and just in closing, I'd like to give a shout out to, and I'm, I'm sure there was more people involved, but it sure seems like John Cassidy's just been on the ball lately. Whenever he has an opportunity for a ribbon cutting, he always goes out, and he's got the connections, he brings in the, the Good Morning Sacramento from Sacramento. There was a new business over on Plora, Boba Tea, attended that last week, and then before that it was Axme, and then tomorrow's going to be Cecilia, Thursday, Cecilia Winery. And so this is somebody in our community that's just on the ball and promoting community development. So with that, we are adjourned.